You have an item that you'd like to address to court. There are some time issues there on the paper. And if you will complete those and make sure you complete the full form and give them to Chief Evans, who is there, and he will present those to us at the beginning of the meeting. So we'll begin now with our invocation, and then we please both our American flag and Texas flag.
Most gracious heaven, Father, we thank you for today, and we thank you for this beautiful time of the year. We thank you now, as we move into this meeting, Lord, that you'll guide us and direct us, and make sure that we take care of the business of this county. Father, we pray for our country, we pray for our state, our county, and all the various governmental entities that are represented. Father, we especially always remember our first responders and the vital role they play in our county and all over the nation. Keep us safe, these things rest in thy son's holy name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the Texas flag.
One state under God, one indivisible.
Do you have any time additions to motion? I do have a couple of announcements to make, and the measures we need for the jury's hearing. I want you to know that finally, last Friday, well, actually Saturday night, about 7:24, we got a letter from the, or an email from the governor's office saying that they have finally reimbursed us the $111,000 for the murder grant that we had on the Charles Brown law case. So that's money that we've been working on, and I'd like to thank everybody on that, including Pam Carter, and also Karen, her office, for the work that could place in this country. So I guess the check is in the mail, or electronic transfer is in the mail a long time ago, so we'll find that out. The other thing I wanted to mention is the fact that our next commissioner's court has been moved to Friday, March 24th. That's the Kaufman County Day. Check and see what's going on, I guess.
Reject.
Okay. March 24th, Bill Friday, because the following Monday will be the 27th, and that's when Kaufman County Day in Austin will be taking place. We're only moving our regular meeting up to Friday, March 24th. It'll be same time here in this building. And in regards to that, just so you'll know, our maintenance department is working diligently, facilities department, in removing, remodeling and renovating this courtroom room, as well as removing the asbestos from the front building, tax officer, and the other offices that surround it. Not sure when that's going to start, but there is a possibility that we will, well, there's a very distinct possibility. A sure thing, I think, that we're going to close this building completely down when they do the removal of the asbestos. And so we're gonna, obviously, we've got a lot of people that come in and out of this facility every day. A lot of employees do too, so we're gonna be working to relocate those employees, and we may have, try to get some assistance from the state on a trailer that perhaps we can use for part of this office that would sit out back in the parking lot. And also the EOC building and dispatch, not the dispatch center, but training. We don't know when that'll take place, so that may even be, it will have to be someplace else besides here too. So that's a work in progress, it's a job that very much needs to be cleaned. And I know the folks that are involved in that are trying to schedule that, and everybody is much advance notice as we begin. So we'll begin now with the consent agenda. First one is the presentation of the 2016 Texas Department of State Health Services Five-Star Award given to the Kaufman County Sheriff's Office for Evidence and Vital Registration. And this used, we won't, we'll write for you, we won't read the rest of the items. You want to tell us a little about that.
There are 500 local registers that are evaluating each year over their performance regarding training and diligence to their duties and being proactive in preservation measures. And out of the 500, so local registers, 50,000 have given this award, and this is how thirteen people receive it, and we're always working on it every day.
I believe there's an article in the local paper, I'm sure, and some of the other paper, we'll make it up to them, so congratulations to you and to your staff. I know that doesn't happen by accident. Next item is to discuss and consider issuing a proclamation designating that March 19th through the 25th, 2017, be proclaimed as poison prevention week in Kaufman County. That's part of a national movement. We have a report from Children's Shelter, Loretta Williams, showing the activities in that organization for December 2016, 2017, and February 2017. And then D is to discuss and consider changing member contact data for Texas Association of Counties from Tiffany Baydon, who was the interim human resource director to Lori Cool, our current human resource director. Then E is likewise also to discuss, consider changing the member contact for the Texas Association of Counties, HEBP member contact designation from Tiffany Baydon, who was interim to Lori Cool, who is now our human resource director. These are housekeeping items. And Lori, I know you're here, and I think that were requests that we got from PAC to do that. Anybody have any questions about any of these consent items? No, I'm in for a motion to accept. Have a motion, Commissioner Phillips. Have a second from Commissioner Hunt. All in favor, say aye. Aye, those votes. Item number three is to discuss, sign a resolution to designate April 2nd through the 8th, 2017, as National Crime Victims Week in Kaufman County. This was presented, I believe, by the DA's office, Karen. Any, any of you like to say about that? I know Judge Wyatt is here today.
She's not, I mean, she'll be here later, but basically April is National Crime Victims Month in Texas. And so during the week of April 2nd through the 8th in Kaufman County, we honored the National Crime Victims Rights Week. And there are several events and activities that take place, and we just presented a proclamation to the court, to declare National Crime Victims Rights Week for April 2nd through the 8th of 2017.
I think we have a, there's an event that takes place during that week, that, by invitation to people that have been affected by crime, and we hear that we have to play around. So we have a motion in the door to that request. Have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, we'll have a second. Commissioner Barber, second's motion, all in favor, say aye. Those votes. Item number four is from Constable Stevens to discuss and consider accepting the racial profiling report for Kaufman County, precinct number three. Constable Stevens, would you like to come up? Do you have any comments? Or anybody has any questions? Just like everything is in order.
Yes. And other points been here, everything's been cut out for the speakers.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? About a motion to approve the report designated. I'll make a motion. Commissioner Barber, makes that motion, have a second. Commissioner Hunt, second's motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, Commissioner Barber, thank you very much. And is the gang guard here, Trent Markus.
He's not here.
He had requested, and he may have just been a little bit, he may be a victim of the time chain. We'll skip over his right now, and if he doesn't, did not able to make the vote, we'll try to get him. Wanted to give a report on the activities of his office as far as getting concerned with Kaufman County. Item number six is to discuss and consider purchasing a diamond boom, boom, more in the amount of $58,330, and a diamond boom fixture attachment in the amount of $11,198 for triple blade and steel, utilizing the Bible contract number 529-17 for precinct three road and bridge. Lisa.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barber, we need this, if we must, to attach to the number seven item. It's on the list. They're watching the Bible contract.
We need this replacement of the piece of equipment that. All right, you have a motion on item number six. Commissioner Barber, the next motion, do you have a second? Commissioner Hunt, second's motion, all in favor, say aye. Item number seven is to discuss and consider purchasing a John Deere 6110 M.C. fracturing in the amount of $3,416, $0.88 per hour utilizing PASB contract number 447-14 for precinct three road and bridge.
That is piece of equipment that the government's illegally attached. We use for precinct three and utilizing a co-op, obtaining this document.
And this is another instance where you had to replace the equipment.
Yes, sir.
For the auction dollar. Okay, you do have a motion on item number seven. Have a motion, Commissioner Barber, do you have a second? Commissioner Phillips, second's motion, all in favor, say aye. Those votes. Item number eight is to discuss and consider lease with the option to purchase calling equipment for precinct three road and bridge from RDO Equipment utilizing Bible contract number 515-16. Two John Deere 310 tail backhoe walkers at $5,480 each, and one John Deere 333 Jeep Skid steer with attachment GSA4 at $73,725.
This is also precinct three, and Barbara's meeting this equipment for, for some of the stuff that was auctioned off or on out.
You're getting your equipment replaced.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion, Commissioner Barber? Have a motion, Commissioner Barber, do I have a second? Commissioner Phillips, second's motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, those votes. Thank you, Lisa. Discuss, Lori, this is yours, I believe, discuss and consider approving free fee, not free, but a.
You need break, break things now, good.
Yeah, we might, or gas fee evaluation, you might explain the gas fee used, or so. We should have printed that out.
It is a.
Government account.
Government account standard.
I would probably say should.
It is a valuation of the retirement system. For the entire retirement, retirement system, they have to evaluate the plan every two years. And this would be the valuation we use for the fiscal year 2017 accounting purposes. It'll be used for the next two years, this would be that they would do that valuation. And then you're proposing a three-year period.
It's actuarial, actuarial study that requires, you know, outside auditors to look at it.
And all the issues going on in Dallas and other areas, it's just safe to, yeah, and make sure that our county retirement is in good shape, which it is, and we've been very fortunate.
What's the total fee? How the explanation?
Fifty-eight cents.
It was fifty-eight cents, but they were using. The 125, I think it's fifty-eight cents. I'm more than that.
It's actually 47.65.
That's it, 47.65, sorry. Yeah, it was like 4,800 last year, but they're giving us a pricing discount.
Right, so it's not.
That's true, that is true, I wanted to point that out, it's not an increase, it's, this would pay us every two years. And we usually pay that out in professional services. On that, that's what's.
All right, I have a motion regarding the gas fee increase. A motion, Commissioner Phillips, do you have a second? Commissioner Barber, second's motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those votes. All right, number ten is to discuss.
I'm sorry, I have a question. The paperwork said it's a decrease, but basically you said we were just approving the fee to do this.
The agenda says it's an increase, it's actually not an increase. It's, it's actually a fee that we pay every two years to have the actuary services done. So the, so the agenda shouldn't say increase.
It should just say.
It shouldn't say.
It should just say, yeah, renew the contract.
Okay. The prior, the prior fee we paid was 5,860 bucks, last two years. All right, so the base fee is 54.75 minus, they gave us 835 discount, plus 125 net cost fee, which is 1,095 less than the prior fee of 5,860.
So it's really a decrease.
Yeah.
But the point, I think, that she says was more is we need to approve the fee to move forward with.
Yes, it's a whole new contract. It's 4,765 dollars, which is less than what we paid last year.
Oh, the motion that was made, who made the motion?
I did. Yeah, I guess we need to change the motion to, to be in the.
Decrease.
Decrease, a decrease in the amount from the two years previous, of the discounts of keeping the service paid.
It's the contract, it's the contract you're wanting to approve. And the new. No, the amendment, the, the motion should really be just to accept the contract. The contract with.
The new promise.
The new prize.
Four thousand.
Yeah.
The contract should be.
Forty-seven sixty-five.
Yeah, it should be the acceptable contract.
I'll, I'll amend the motion to say, make a motion to accept the renewal of the contract with the new, over the range of 47.65.
Okay.
That's, the CRV's consulting.
So does that give you what you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, there's everything up.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Those votes. And really, I guess we could have combined these two.
Yes.
Item is to discuss and consider approving business association agreement with Gabriel Roder Smith and Company for consulting in our actuary in services in connection with the. So do I have a motion to go with that?
Yeah, I'll make a call.
I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, do you have a second? Commissioner Barber, second's motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Very much. Next is Sheriff Pabbers, who is not here, I believe it's not that, but he's here for the weekend now.
So you got a little more.
Yeah.
We're ready.
Huh? Ready.
Looks like we pretty well got it. Oh, I have got one decision to make.
Yes, you have the financial report the month before.
Pretty well self-explanatory.
Yeah, I think, I could, if you have any questions, I'll just add that actual work, I can read all this out.
No, I think we can do that, but it is good to have this report in mind, presented with the sheriff's office. It's good. February was a 28th day of month, so probably numbers might not be quite as high perhaps as what we go with other months, but I don't know, compared this back to 2016, just pretty, pretty static, pretty, pretty long.
For the month of stat, yeah, it was one of the first six. The lawyers have this, this is a good report, isn't it? Yeah. And again, if not, I don't, I don't like reports.
Well, you know, it's a presence, I mean, you're leading the national average by 3%. The state average by 3%. We're, Texas, that's why investigators exist.
Anything you'd like to add? Sheriff, jail stand, pretty low, I think.
Yes. That pretty, that pretty, we don't have jobs here, we don't have work. Don't have any work. Do we need a motion?
We need a motion to accept.
I'll, make a motion to accept.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips to accept sheriff's report, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hunt? All in favor, say aye. Those votes. Thank you, Chief, for being here. Next item is from our fire marshal, who also heads up our environmental enforcement in our public works department, so if you'd like to come back.
You also have a report, boss. Yes, sir, I actually presented, because this is the first time presenting a public report. I'm going to have presented the fiscal year 2016. For the prompt sheet of each department, and then format up what you do. It's a, it'll be, pretty much just a spreadsheet, and my intention would be for the coming months to keep the same numbers in each column for previous months, and just show the, show the numbers here on the way for each department. Not much revenue generated, you know, directly to the department on the board, of course. I have a financial associate there, that most of my insurance is generated in the court system.
Wow, well, look how they jumped. I mean, the illegal dump.
This year, we got extra minutes.
Twenty-three February last year, six-two.
Yes, we really jumped.
I know our guys are picking up a lot of the way out today, picking up couches and stuff like that.
Yeah, I showed the cleanups that the county actually does, that we got four columns down here, and cleanups really about a collection.
How do you keep track of the cleaners?
Just note which ones that we do, and then which ones we're about.
You're probably going to want to mark any from the cause?
Yes, sir.
You have to mark, sometimes our guys just see them, and they just go back out there and take care of them.
If that's the case, then we would go back and let you.
So we need to notify you, we gotta do something.
It would help with the numbers. A lot of times, the cleanups, I have decisions myself, but not always the ones who bring them.
How many about sound, each yard, inspection, what are you doing on that?
Those are just, those are required by the state law, PDLR requires that several yards are painted inspection, and pretty much it's going through, making sure that they're meeting requirements of what the state law mandates, the screen along the front, and no oils, things like that, or totally.
Commissioner Barber, I think you have a personal experience with some of our environmental guys. You want to look at that, what took place in your vision?
Well, last week, actually, Aaron Conway, he works with me, is supervisor over my office and everything there. He went with Randy out looking at several properties, some that we've received complaints on, and just some that we found on our own, that, and of course, Randy knew about a bunch of them already. But we're going to be working with him as much as we can, get these places cleaned up, and get these, all the stuff called off, whatever we got to do, and clean it up. We got to go away by the trailer too.
That's more, it's a, it's a. We try to get decisions, plan what we can, but some of them should not have to make contact with. And, you know, the simple ones that we load it up, and pack it, pick it up, or turn it, so forth, and the county will take care of that. Some of the markers, other instances, we do that to go the next step. And the court session, which we've done with Commissioner Phillips, and I haven't been successful with that.
And we have, we have one, we have a brand new starting unit?
Yes, sir.
And that one?
That one, we're in love with Commissioner Allen, similar situation to this person.
And that one, that one was funny, because that's the same one with the. Point saved, everybody shot it for a hole. That guy bought it, now it's going to be another one. It's just unlucky match. Guy's starting right there. You know, Rachel.
It's not going to work out though. On the fire marshal's report, again, right the same, 2016, and then the current year completed months. And as well as public works, I did show monthly revenue deposits. Did bother that column, the issue to the activity to do that. The fire marshal report on the grass, brush, hay fire, I just kind of, rather than creating a lot of wicker columns, I kind of catrashed them. Illegal burning, and the burn damage, which are actually two separate violations, but I kind of put them together. And the false alarm, the control, possibly could call that board, that actually turned out to be not much.
That's pretty major fire damage around, right here.
Yes, sir, I think we're out there, it's part of reason, I think I'm almost got to it. About 450, around that, it's a bay, very close proximity to the market. We're able to, with the use of their trackers, and fire marshal forces, we keep the cooling lines and tracking board, and they're separating out unburned, burned, try to create a barrier there, a distance barrier, where we wouldn't have, we save about 300 miles a day in the water.
Could I make a suggestion? I noticed, I monitor the radio now, and I notice that many times our volunteer fire departments respond to control burns. Some of them, you know, a few of them do get out of hand, but some of them, people just never called in and told them, is there some way we can do some publicity on that? Maybe put it on our website, and what procedure, maybe the media could help us do that. So that is a waste of manpower if you've got, you know, a control burn going on. And again, I know some do get out of control.
Yes, sir, we have the control burns, they're actually, regulations, if not a law, that mandates that they do it by. It's more of a courtesy.
Right.
For the reasons that we're discussing now. But we do, we do put that on our fire marshal's website, and our Facebook page. We can get that on the news, like.
If you give it to IT and have them do that, I think that might be.
We usually do an annual report, this one's a very, very, very.
Might not be bad to do that. This weekend seemed like a good weekend for a fire, we have one in 40, too. Way of calling 911, like crazy on that one.
And it's typical, I mean, not all of them are that way, but a lot of the fire people just driving down the road, they see a fire, and they call it in, dispatch trying to get information. And they don't, they said, I'm five miles down the road, I just saw a fire, so we looked.
So that was, that was, you see it all day, you're out there, I guess you look at that.
I think they all know that, that spring flash that, just late, just there. Big people.
Seems like it's too windy, I think, out, big in there.
Common sense, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I, it was, oh, great. Called me, I didn't know where it was. Part of everything, I guess, was important to me.
Hey, anything else?
The population would be the public. Or the increased count.
Now, with public works, revenue, do you send money to the state, some of revenue to the state?
Yes, sir, for every new installation that's done, in essence, that is. Yes, sir, for every new installation that's done, in essence, that is within itself a hazard situation. So state law requires that paperwork be done, the owner of that system has to file an affidavit, with the kind of clerk, basically putting the citizens on notice that we have a potential hazard situation here. If properly maintained, there should never be issue, as those that are not maintained that can actually provide the liquidity, equity and so forth, to be out on top of the ground. But part of that process, because we are the authorized agents for all of the state of Texas, and we're assuming all the responsibilities it has, they are charging us a ten dollar fee for each system that governs each new system.
So you're sending ten dollars?
Ten dollars fee, it's part of the payment states, and that has nothing to do with the maintenance contract rules that we do, and like that, it's just a contractual fee that we, that we pay this year. I think we pay it by the quarter, am I correct? Pay it every three months to the state.
So you're paying it for the previous to work?
Yes, I'm. So it's always been. And all those numbers are going to continue to pass through this Cawthorne County. It's not really often it blows up.
Okay, any other questions or a comment from the fire marshal? I have a motion to accept or pull it, as to then. Have a motion from Commissioner Barber, second from Commissioner Hunt. All in favor say aye. Item number thirteen, thank you. Item number thirteen is to discuss and consider line item transfer.
Anyone have any questions, I'm going to transfer. You understand what I did, where that changed the budget stuff?
Anybody have any further questions? I'll, I'm paying a motion to accept. Line item transfer, and a motion from Commissioner Phillips to have a second. Commissioner Hunt, seconds motion, all in favor say aye. Those votes. And then the last one is the claim for payment. We had a copy of these for, since last week, anybody have any comments about any of those? Not all of them. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Claim for payment, our payment, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Anyone have any questions?
Some of that was on money, I suppose, with the transportation, on, pretty.
Forty-three percent of that was health, life and workers' costs, we pay the, the health insurance paid by the month, the others are paid on a monthly and a quarterly basis. So we had one of those payments, I mean, just hit it all on time. Our quarterly payment to the Frazel District, in our inmate housing head, and the road bond expenditures, will be the five thousand. Yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the claim for payment?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Phillips makes that motion, have a second. Hunt, please, second. All in favor say aye. Those votes. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion from Commissioner Phillips. Commissioner Barber, all in favor say aye. Thank you very much.
I have to say something.
We are going to go into an executive session, we had an amendment that was issued, so we will exit the regular meeting and go into an executive session, so, so do I have a motion to go into a closed session?
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Barber. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Barber.
I need a minute.
Thirty-five. Okay, thank you very much, and we will hear from our attorney. Okay, the court exited closed session. A motion made by Commissioner Phillips, seconded by Commissioner Barber, and the time was ten fifteen. So do I have a motion concerning the, any action following?
No action.
Have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, no action, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Hunt, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Barber, second from Commissioner Phillips.